Dear tenants, look forward to another productive meeting. I would advise you that I have added another item, item E, and that'll be Holiday Lights. John Urn needs a couple of minutes, and maybe Santa Claus got here, I don't know. We're gonna find out at the end of the meeting. Keep my fingers crossed.
I hope so.
I hope so. But we'll start with the Sherwood Lakes flooding issues. Tom, you introduce, Mark?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay.
All right, so I'd like to introduce some members from Public Works. Our presenter today will be Mark Johnson, who is the administrator of Public Works Operations. For all those things you send to me and ask to get done, it's almost always Mark's forces that are out there, and they're doing it 365/24/7. I also have John Fowler, he is the city engineer, and also the administrator for Public Works Engineering, and Tony Alger, who is the head of our newly-formed Stormwater Engineering Center, and then Mike Monday, who is one of the senior project managers also in the Stormwater Engineering Center. So, Mark's got, this time, this is not as much gloom and doom as some of our other presentations, because Sherwood's got some special features on it, can make the solutions a little bit...
But let me just say, we welcome Mark, but we also welcome everyone else from Public Works. We thank you for the great job y'all do every day for us. All right, buddy, you're on.
This is a short presentation, but it's the status of what we've been doing with the Sherwood Lakes project. Sherwood Lakes is served by two lakes, north and south. They represent about one-third of the drainage area that drains to the lakes. The original design was for the lakes to be at elevation three and have the flood storage capacity to handle a 100-year storm event without any outflow. Due to the water table rising and rainfall events, the lakes in that system continue to fluctuate and most time rise above elevation three, which diminishes the flood storage capacity of the lake system. We took a look at the area, and we determined that for every inch of stormwater runoff from the drainage area, the lake systems will rise three inches. What that tells us is that there's flood storage capacity within the lakes when they're at elevation three to handle a 100-year storm event, or about 12 inches of water running off the drainage area. So, the purpose of the project is to reestablish the flood storage area in the lakes by pulling down the lake system and maintaining them at elevation three. That's the purpose of the project. The project has four elements: build a pump station at each of the lakes, construct intake pipes to the pump stations, construct discharge pipes to the outfall ditch, and to connect the two lakes with a about 36-inch diameter pipe. In the interim, Public Works Operations is pumping down the lakes after we monitor them as we see fit. Basically, our protocol is if the lakes rise up to elevation four, we mobilize, we pump them back down to elevation three. Right now, it takes us about two weeks to pump down each lake, and we do it every other month. The first element is construction of the intake pipe at the north lake, the pump station pad or wet well, and the 20-inch outfall pipe. This is where we're gonna station a temporary pump, a 12-inch pump, that'll keep the lake down when we need to pull it down, as the other design efforts are underway. Construction is scheduled to start in December 2017. Cost estimate is about $750,000.
So, 12-inch pump, does that mean the size of the...what's that mean?
Uh, diameter of the pump itself. It'll pump 13 cubic feet per second, is what that'll pump.
Oh, wow.
Okay. Oh, excuse me. The permanent pump work is under design. The next work package will be the pumps and the electric controls that'll go at the north lake, where we are gonna be constructing the wet well and the concrete pad and the intake and outflow. Plans right now are scheduled to be completed in September 2018. Construction November 2018. Rough cost right now, $1 million. For the south lake, you're gonna have to construct the pump station, the intake pipe, the outfall pipe. The schedule is lagged by a year, because right now, we know we're gonna have some real estate acquisition issues and probably some power supply issues, and we will, as we progress through the design, we'll understand those better and see if we can pull that schedule back closer to the north lake project. Again, work right now is estimated $1 million. In addition, we're gonna be designing the connector between the two lakes, and if we can pull that in and build it with the south lake, we intend to do that, but there's probably gonna be some real estate acquisition issues. So, that...
Thank you, Barbara.
...basically what we're doing.
Let everybody else ask your questions.
Well, you told me you were, no, I'm sorry. Okay. Anybody else have questions? Okay, Jessica?
Where is the outfall going to be?
The outfall is a ditch that is behind Sherwood Lakes in between Seaboard Road. It's not the Seaboard roadside ditch. There's another ditch in the wooded area.
Is that going to add to the flooding that happens on that part of the road already, or...
No.
And that would be a comment that I would like to make to the council, so that we understand what these solution systems are. These solution systems have been in place since we had the Matthew, and what it's designed to do is pump down the lakes, because the engineer estimate of where the water table was was so wrong that the original design was to keep the lake at elevation three. This thing wants to pump up to elevation six plus, and we can't keep it down. And I would ask Tom Leahy to step to the podium and just address what the capacity of Sherwood Lakes are. This pumping occurs in dry period of time, pre-storm event, because we wanna create the capacity that these BMPs can hold those quantities of water. And so, if you get that done in advance, the pressure on West Net Creek and other receiving bodies is just in the normal course when water is not an issue. We want those capacities to be there. And I'd like for Tom to give you some order of magnitude, 'cause I'm not sure we fully understand what we're dealing with in size of lake, capacity, and what Matthew would have delivered had we had this in...
One more second. Did you wanna ask questions before, Barbara, 'cause you told me you had some questions?
No, let him ask, 'cause I've got a question. So, 13 cubic feet per second sounds like a lot, but it's not really a lot in terms of what falls during storms. And Mr. Hanson was right. The plan for this, and for some, also, you may have heard, not too long ago, we talked a little bit about what was gonna, what was being proposed for Asheville, is really to pump the lakes down when it is not raining and keep them low, so when it does, the lakes can trap the water. In the case of Sherwood, the great thing is, there's 123 acres of lakes there, and if you have them pumped down, so there's three feet of storage, that's almost 400 acre-feet of storage. Well, the entire watershed that goes into it's only 300 acre-feet, so that's why Mark indicated it could handle the entire 12 inches of Matthew's rainfall, which wouldn't all run off at the same time, and some of it does evaporate and some of it does soak in. Could have handled all of that runoff. That 300 acres during a Matthew storm is receiving over 300 cubic feet per second rainfall, a third of which is going straight into the lakes, and the other two-thirds is falling on the land and moving to the lakes within the next day or so. So, that 300 acre, 300 cubic feet per second dwarfs the little 13 CFS pump that pumps down and downstream. So, that really is our theory, to not raise water levels downstream, but to get these lakes pumped down and then let them do the job they were designed to do, which is trap that rainfall.
All right, Barbara, you ready now?
I am.
All right.
First thing, I want to really thank Public Works, because they did a magnificent meeting last week with the Prince of San projects, and covered a lot of areas, 'cause when you think about it, the Prince of San district is half the city geographically, and when you're talking about drainage area, you're talking about a very large area with a lot of different situations. And they, I think they handled it very well in allowing people to individually ask their questions and provide their comments, so thank you a lot. Now, I can go on from there.
No more "thank you"?
Well, yes, yeah. See, when y'all originally had an estimate on Sherwood Lakes, I think it was like $20 million, and I know y'all just kind of were guessing. Is this one, I mean, $2,750,000, is that it, or are you thinking that there's more out there yet to come?
Want me to answer it? I'll answer it. I talked to John Fowler about that today. The $20 million project was generated about eight months ago, when we're putting together the CIP. At that time, we were envisioning we were gonna have to make improvements downstream, down the ditch, through the wooded area, all the way down to the culvert at Seaboard Road, and most probably make improvements to the culvert. That would've meant buying a lot of easement or right-of-way, and probably relocating a lot of utilities. So, that is how the $20 million project got large. As we have been designing and collaborating and drilling down to what we think we really need to build to maintain elevation three in both the lakes, we've gotten closer to about $3.8 million. There could be, well, in the CIP, we got $1 million this year, next year, we're gonna get $2 million. Once we move through the design for this year and get the $2 million, we'll probably have a better handle on any other cost that may be associated with the project. So, it may go up a million, it may stay right where it is.
Well, it does sound better than did at first. You mentioned in your comments just now that you might have some real estate acquisition issues. Is that from the original developer, or is that from these private folks who have purchased their homes in there?
We are at least gonna have to talk to the condo association about the site of the pump station on the south lake. The north lake, we are all in our own easements.
Okay. Well, in going back, Sherwood Lakes has always really bothered me, because now, I was not on the council when it was approved, and so I didn't have all of the data that, you know, I'm sure was there. But, you know, I did follow it, and I do have that transcript, and it's never a good idea to read those verbatims, because they kinda promise a lot. And this is the thing that concerns me a lot about Sherwood Lakes, is, you know, we've got two groups of people. We've got the group of people who have purchased the property in there in good faith, and we really need to look out for them. But then, we also have, you know, the developers and what was indicated at the time of the rezoning. And I just, I'm concerned that the two groups of people are, you know, the citizens who maybe are having to make up the difference for a lot of things that were not done properly. But then, you have to look out for the people who purchased the properties, too, who run into this with Asheville Park as well as this. In reading the transcript, the only mention that I could find of anything having to do with drainage, because unfortunately, back in 2005, or whenever this was, drainage really wasn't talked about at the time of the rezoning. But one council member asked the attorney, "Do you contemplate using both lakes for stormwater management?" And he says, "Well, we have indicated that we probably, we will probably only use the southern lake for stormwater management. But because of the size of the lake, our experts all say there is no issue with regard to being able to have high water quality and so forth. We can engineer it." But actually, our experts say it isn't going to matter, given the huge size of the lake and the volume of water in that lake versus a relatively small amount of stormwater that will be used for, and so on. And the issue with these projects in the transition area was that they were not going to cost the public taxpayer. They were going to cover all of their own expenses, and there's quite a long diatribe about that at the end. But this particular development, of course, got density credit for those lakes. And then, the, what it was supposed to do was quite a lot. This proposal seeks to redevelop the 240 acres into a unique, upscale, intergenerational community, which will feature two recreational lakes, over 120 acres in size, more than 55 acres of green space, that is open area outside of the lakes, with over three and a half miles of multipurpose trails, which will be 10 feet wide for public use, including equestrian use. And it goes on and on and on about having sailing and kayaking and canoeing and paddle boating, and certainly fishing. We're absolutely certain that after redevelopment, the lakes we wish to create will be a fantastic visual amenity, as well as a tremendous recreational amenity, not only for this area of the city, but for the city as a whole. Equestrian family trails. The developer has promised to provide the city, well, here is drainage easements to solve a drainage problem in Highgate Greens. But the big thing that has always worried me is this question of the ownership, and I just wanna make sure, you know, we said we took a drainage easement, or we do have a drainage easement with that, but what we're doing now, I hope, doesn't buy the city more responsibility for this development, that we're not getting ourselves into a situation where we are now going to be responsible for a lot of other things. One thing I've always been concerned about was the ownership of the lakes and the liability. The, one council member says, "There's been some conversation about liability as it relates to the lake. Has there been much discussion between you and the applicant?" The attorney says, "We've made it very clear that that liability will fall totally upon the homeowners association and the developer with regard to the lake. That's why there'll be no swimming permitted. It's just for water activities, waterborne activities. It's absolutely clear that it will long to and be, as all the open space, other than that dedicated to the city would be, would be owned by the homeowners association, and they would insure it. They would insure both lakes, because they're going to own both lakes," and so forth and so forth. So, when we take over and we start doing this project, because I know we've had some questions, we had some questions last year about some of the erosion and some of the trails, and what's the city's responsibility, and I've always thought this was an enormous responsibility to give to a homeowners association, and I just don't feel good that they've got that responsibility, but that's what I guess they've got. But what about the city's responsibility? Now, when we're doing all of this, and we're taking on this responsibility with all of this drainage, with all of this pumping, are we now assuming additional responsibility that the taxpayers are going to be responsible for that clearly, at the time this application was approved, it was not committed to the public responsibility to have?
That sounds like a legal question, but maybe more than an engineering question.
Well, it's something that I want to make sure we've got on the table, and I just really hope, because, you know, we're told, "Well, when we accept a system, then it becomes the city's responsibility," and so forth. You know, we've kinda been hearing that. Well, I wanna know where, and I think the homeowners there need to know, what's their responsibility, what's the city's responsibility? You know, it consists, those barra pits are pretty big.
Yes, they are. Planning, Parks and Recreation, Law Department, and Public Works are still meeting. We have, there have been communications with the developer and the homeowners association. At this point, the only responsibility that Public Works and the city is taking on is that we're gonna build these facilities to keep that lake down low enough so that it can handle stormwater. We're aware of what is the city's responsibility and what is the homeowners association out there. You are correct, by the way, that is a big responsibility for that homeowners association. The developer probably perhaps knew it at the time. The homeowners buying the home don't, when you buy the home, many homeowners don't realize what they're buying into, and there probably will be at some point, they may come to the city and ask us to take over some things. But right now, we do, we are working with them, and I think that we could get a response back to you as to what is their responsibility and what is our responsibility.
Well, just so we do, but when I went back on the council in 2006, one of the first things I asked, and we did, was that we passed an ordinance requiring disclosure of recreational areas in the Prince of San transition area and public open space to any homeowners association responsibility for liability. So, I hope since that time that people who bought in these areas have known their responsibilities, but this is pretty heavy. And, you know, I, but there's also all of this fact that now taxpayers are having to pick up what was promised was not gonna be their responsibility at the time. Now, there's still some commercial along Prince of San Road there. I mean, are what we're doing now going to now allow that commercial to be built, and they don't have to pay in anything, or...
I'm not sure that there is a...
I don't know that we have that site plan, and I have heard that that would be the desire, because the developer owns that. I think that we are in conversation with the developer with regards to his cost participation on this proposal that you saw today, and we're expecting him to make some conscientious decisions about his liabilities with regards to his miscalculation on what the groundwater impacts would be, which caused this doubling of the elevation inside that lake. His bond is currently available, but as you know, it's minor compared to the dollars that we're talking here. But you do have some control on that with regards to freeing that up to give access to the commercial piece that's adjacent to Prince of San, and I believe, right, two parcels. And I believe that is still within, within your control, and he can't move on it until then. So, Tom is trying to politely say, "We still are working it out." He has been patient, as he should be, to allow us to figure out this number. I mean, I would not have been too aggressive if I thought $20 million was coming at me hard, but knowing that the solution is probably $3.8 to $4 million, as compared to that number, is significant return to the stormwater program that'll be dedicated to other projects. So, it is a good news story in one sense, and I understand the fault business that we're, you know, and who's responsible for this, and we, as city staff, take some responsibility for approving that plan, for recommend, and for understanding that once it's built, and the homeowner's ability to fix this doesn't exist, and so, we're trying to, trying to give them a solution that we can maintain and preserve.
And I appreciate all of that. I appreciate all of that and so forth.
Yes, ma'am.
But, you know, anyway, I just don't want the city to get into a bigger responsibility than what we've had in the past, particularly in regard to those lakes, because I believe they were offered to the city, and the city said, "No, we don't want them," and I just wanna make sure that's still where it stands. But speaking of groundwater, now, I know that way back, when we were looking at using groundwater for a water source, and we did the deep wells, they were done right in those locations, and I know the recommendations were that we not do that pumping in those places because of possible saltwater intrusion. Now, all this pumping that's happening there with these barra pits, and the way these barra pits are filling up and stuff, is anybody monitoring groundwater, is kinda what I'm getting at? Because we certainly are reliant on groundwater, and does anybody look at the aquifer at all?
There is an ongoing, the USGS and Public Utilities do monitor, have an ongoing real lot live, online live monitoring of wells throughout the city, both in the water table and in the lower aquifer. Certainly, back in 1980, since I was the project manager of that study, we had concluded that trying to pump 10 million gallons per day from the Punggol Ridge, day in, day out, 365 days a year, 24/7, that the aquifer couldn't sustain that. Now, I will say that over time, with seawater rise and increased precipitation, sometimes it seems like the groundwater levels are too high, and maybe if we had pumped some water out, we would be solving some of the problems. But we're only talking about keeping that lake about two feet below the normal water table. And yes, when you, when it's held down at three feet, and if the normal water table is five, water will be flowing to that, just like a giant well. Of course, it operated for decades at about 40 feet down, and all that did, that did lower the groundwater in the water table throughout the entire region, throughout that entire, when I say region...
Area.
...within a mile or two around it. And that's one of the reasons that the developer made a mistake and said, thought that the normal water level was three feet. The borrow pit operation had in fact artificially lowered the water table, and as soon as they let the lakes fill, they came back to their normal level, which was five, five and a half feet. But we do have wells monitoring, and we might add a few more, and go, but you can go online right today and get in on the, get real-time groundwater monitoring in terms of water level.
We're talking about...
And water quality also.
Pumping on the other side of the ridge now, too, with Asheville Park, I guess, as a part of that program, so when we're doing all of this pumping, 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 you know, it's something to watch. One more question. Now, you're gonna be pumping all this into West Net Creek. West Net Creek is, I mean, everything's going to West Net Creek. When are we finishing that modeling for West Net Creek, and what are we doing to look out for the receiving waters when we are pouring all of these developments?
By the end of this year, Watershed Nine, which is the subwatershed nine, which is the headwaters of the southern watershed on the west side of, excuse me, 10, I believe, is on the west side. Watershed, subwatershed 10 is the west side of Prince of San Road, the headwaters of the southern watershed, and the east side of Prince of San Road, which is subwatershed nine, they will be done by the end of this year, and we will have those two watersheds modeled.
And so, we'll have all of that data when we are getting ready to do this project, so we're gonna know going in that we're doing, not doing something that's gonna be detrimental.
We would be able to tell you, the model would predict, in this case, you're gonna find, the model will predict numbers, because it'll carry them out to many significant figures, but just like in Asheville, the impact of 13 cubic feet per second on these receiving waters is just going to be, I mean, miniscule.
And mentioning Asheville, of course, that's another big thing. Will we have an opportunity...
This is Sherwood.
I know this is Sherwood.
Okay.
But we're gonna have an opportunity to discuss those recommendations for Asheville, too, before that moves forward, because I think there were...
I would assume so.
Okay, good.
I just, my main comment that Tom attended Asheville Park Civic League and gave a very thorough presentation, to which I've received personal notices that he did a fine job, and you might just give them quick feedback, our continued commitment to attend civic leagues, to share with them our plans, to be able to support solutions.
But, I mean, we are, the final go-ahead comes from this body, right?
The final go-ahead on any cost participation with HomeFed would come from this body, because you'd have to have a cost participation agreement approved by council. I will say that you did approve a capital improvement program that included money for Asheville, and we are under design of Scenario Five, which was the initial phase, and unless we were told that's not right, we plan to move forward on that with or without HomeFed's...
I know that there are a lot of questions, particularly from folks in the receiving area about this project, and so, they kinda wanna make sure they're gonna have some opportunity to make their concerns known to the body.
Well, these are all requiring joint permit applications.
I would reiterate that these projects are designed to pump down the lakes, to create capacity, so that when the storm event happens, they are containing the stormwater, and that stormwater is not being placed into the system, so that it affects the downstream areas when they're most vulnerable. It's designed to occur in advance of that, when we have low waters, when it's not in a weather condition, so that the design, and Asheville, completely opposite of what you just heard on Sherwood, will have a significant increase in the volume of lakes and the surface area and depth, the holding capacity, if you will, of those lakes, and the canals associated with it, which is critically important to building these as soon as we can get going. That's why we put them first, because that was the most significantly underdesigned, underconstructed system that we got now.
I wanna know what negotiation has been and with whom, and there's also that question of whether we're gonna approve additional building, and that's, that's a real rub. So, those two issues, I'll let you know they're out there.
Thank you. Okay, John, then we'll move on.
Relative to the fan fed thing, and I understand that the model's been made available to them, and I, they're exercising that model relative to their proposal, is that correct?
Referring to Punggol, the...
Referring to Punggol, the proposed or potential Punggol.
They're now exercising that model with their.
Not sure what they're doing, but our modeling results have been provided to them. I'm not sure what they're doing with it.
Okay, I just, well, even while I was asking, maybe we should maybe find out. Because if in fact what they said held true, and I'm not saying it is true, Mr. Mayor, but if it held to be true in the model, would that cause us to look at phase five differently than what we currently plan to do and are executing money to spend? Would that be a different look if that worked? Now, if they aren't committing and aren't doing something, then we shouldn't wait. Because I think we owe the citizens to act with due diligence and not wait on someone else's efforts. But if in fact they are fully exercising that model and they have a date certain that, that schedule compatible, and that's all expertise judgment, that it would be prudent not to aggressively pursue on phase five absent that result. I'm just trying to understand, when we had that, when you talked about what it would do, we don't have a model proof that it will do that. But if they confirm that it does, would we look at phase five differently?
Well, okay, their first proposal was we'll take that 47 acres of the airfield that drains into Asheville. We'll take that away. And as we indicated a couple of weeks ago, that would make very small incremental improvements on top of scenario five. And scenario five didn't solve the whole problem.
But that isn't what they're proposing, I understand.
Pardon?
But that's not what they're proposing.
Well, then they also proposed that they could take additional waters from Asheville. We don't know how much they could take. You're getting into now, you're getting into the serious predictions of what happens downstream. So you need these models prepared. You're going to be in the middle of core of engineer applications and VMRC applications because you will be, when you start moving water from one watershed to another, you raise a lot of environmental questions. We don't have all that information, but at this point, from what we do know, I would say you would at least need scenario five. And whatever Punggol Ridge could do, that might eliminate some of the additional phases of Asheville. But we, we would not recommend stopping scenario five design right now. We are moving forward. We would not be going to construction before some of those questions would be refined, but we are moving forward.
Okay, we got one more comment by Barbara and we'll go ahead and move on.
Just to caution everybody, there is no Punggol Ridge development at this time and there won't be until city council approves a rezoning. So I mean, this, this potential developer has to come up with a plan for drainage before he can apply. But that doesn't mean it's approved because there's an awful lot of misunderstanding and so forth going around that it's a done deal. And I keep telling everybody, there's no application at this point and it won't be a done deal until the city council approves it.
And I'm certain it'll get a live discussion and we'll move on right now.
All right, crime, crime six month update. Where's the chief?
He's going to come in this door. Thanks, fellas.
The chief's going to make a grand entrance.
Tony, thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Michael?
Thank you all very much for the information. Appreciate it. The chief makes a grand entrance. Glad to have you, sir. And your team.
Trying to be low key. Chief, how you doing? Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
We welcome you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Stiles. We're going to talk about a six month update on our, what we call our council comp stat report. What I want you to know is that we, we really get a little edgy sometimes when folks want to just talk about data without context and data by itself. Because data is, is a statistical output and what we try to look at in the police department is long-term outcomes. Where are we going and where have we been? With me today, Deputy Chief Bill Dean. I would like council to know that he just came from his first meeting. He was recently appointed to the Department of Corrections Board by the governor. He had his first meeting today, so congratulations to Deputy Chief.
Well, thank you. Great to be back.
Deputy Chief Gallagher's with us. I'd like you to know that he has just been accepted into the Police Executive Leadership Institute. So he'll be leaving next month for his first week with that particular group. He'll be up in Chicago. Also with us today is Ms. Afton Oglesby. She is our supervisor of our planning and analysis team and Captain JT Orr of the third precinct. And I'm going to talk very heavily about the third precinct as we move on. John, if you could go.
We thank all of you all for being here today.
Again, what we like to say is we have data. We can, we look at our data continuously. We are up in our homicides. We want you to know that of those homicide cases that we've had, a couple of them were what we call domestic related. They were inside the home. One of them unfortunately is an infant. We do want you to know that we have cleared or will clear almost all of those cases. We are waiting on forensics on three of our cases. Once we have those in place, we have very good suspects. We're hoping to be able to clear all of them out as, as we move forward. In our robbery categories, we look at robbery and, and we do an in-depth analysis of what we call intelligence-led policing to determine where do we need to go on our robbery cases. About 30% of our robbery cases right now are commercial. That is, somebody goes in and decides to do a holdup at a store, at a business. The rest are street related. A lot of those cases are fed by lifestyle. A lot of our cases that we have are fed by the narcotics trade. Matter of fact, last night we had a case and if I tell you it was a home invasion, that really makes individuals stand up and take notice, a home invasion robbery. It was based on a narcotics transaction where the seller of the narcotics was held up by the buyer of the narcotics and the seller called us to say his home was invaded, he was being held up. We did make the arrest in that case. The one thing that I want you to notice is the category of aggravated assaults. About 62% of our aggravated assaults are assaults that happen outside of a home. They are what we call street-related aggravated assaults. We get those, every city gets those. What we're really concerned about is 20 of those cases involve a firearm or an individual shot. And that's very high for our city. But those particular numbers are up not only in our city, but they're up in the region. And as I converse with my colleagues and major city chiefs, they're up across the country. Everybody today is, we'll, we'll get into some of our gun cases pretty soon. Everybody's carrying a gun. Everybody that we deal with right now has a weapon on them or near them and I'll get into some of those numbers pretty soon. John, of our aggravated assaults, as we said, 62% are non-domestic, 38% are domestic. That doesn't mean we take anything any lighter than we would if they were all quote, "street-related." But we like to at least track where we are on street-related cases versus domestic-related cases. On our domestic-related cases, we have a number of strategies that we are using. We have strategies for the victim. We have strategies for the children of the victim. You know, one of the biggest predictor of juvenile delinquency or repeat domestic violence is if a young child observes and lives with domestic violence. So we have strategies to try and intercept that issue. We have, we have strategies in which we assist the victim as much as we can, including using nonprofit organizations such as Samaritan House to help us. We have a lethality assessment that we use. The officers go out and they fill out a lethality assessment. We analyze it to determine what level of assistance we can give a victim at any given time. We also have a mandatory arrest policy that's driven by state law, but we had it in place prior to the state law being enacted. We also look at, at cases of sexual assaults and rapes where the victim and the offender are known to each other or not known to each other. Again, we, we analyze this. We give everyone the same level of, of assistance and comfort that we can. But we do have a large number of the cases where the victim and the suspect are known to each other. We work them from there. Larcenies. People steal things all the time. One of the things that, that we are really looking at are larcenies from motor vehicle and they are down from the first six months of last year. That is because one of the things that we looked at is how many folks are leaving their cars unlocked in front of their home. When we start to see a series of those cases happening, we will flood an area with officers just to go door to door to talk to people and remind them that if you beep it, you keep it. It used to be lock it or lose it. Well, now everybody has the beeper. You'd be surprised the number of people who not only leave their car open, but they leave the fob inside the car or they leave their house keys inside the car. And how many of the folks are leaving their guns inside of a vehicle? The vehicle's open. We now have a larceny from the vehicle where the weapon is involved and we know it's going to be sold on the street. We look at our violent crime density and I've, I've brought this up on a number of occasions. The highest area that we have is our 227 zone, which believe it or not is the oceanfront. That does not mean that the oceanfront is a violent place to go to. As a matter of fact, with 6.4 million tourists that traverse through our city, we feel is a very safe environment. However, during this time period, we had 27, 28 incidents of violence that occurred between 17th and 28th Street and between Atlantic and Pacific Avenue. So it's a very small area that we have a lot of the issues and the majority of them occur between 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM. We've had our aggravated assaults, which are domestic and non-domestic. We have had some rape cases. We have had eight robbery cases in that area. But when we look at those particular cases and we, and we delve deeper into the victimology, that is, what is causing this person to become a victim? A number of these cases are lifestyle issues, i.e. buying and selling of narcotics, the overindulgence of alcoholic beverages or things of that nature, which then lead to an individual becoming a victim or causing a crime to have been occurred. And we look at our robbery density. What I wanted to show you is there's an area that we're, that we're looking at and it will be our second phase of our community policing strategy and that is the Holland Rosemont area. We've had 12 robberies, six commercial and six non-commercial in the first six months of the year, just in that particular area. And our citywide robberies, as I said earlier, about 30% happened to be commercial. The rest are either in a parking lot somewhere on a street. We have had a number of cases where the robberies take place as a residence. We know a lot of those are fueled by narcotics transactions. So as I get into our community policing strategy and what we've started in the third precinct with Captain Orr doing a fantastic job of getting his officers engaged in Western Bayside. We're going to take that model, that strategy, and we're going to transport it to the Green Run and then to the Holland Road, Rosemont area, Pecan Gardens and down Holland Road. We look at residential burglaries the same way. I do have to let you know that our area where we've had a lot, the larger number of residential burglaries are in the Western Bayside area. That takes in a number of neighborhoods besides Lake Edward to include Campus East and Webblin Place, Cypress Street, just a whole host of neighborhoods. So folks look at this and say, well, that's the area where we've had a lot of burglaries. You're absolutely right. We also have a lot of residences in that area. We probably have the most condensed residential units that we see in that area, except for some areas in Green Run. So therefore you're going to have a higher number in that particular area. Again, data without context, folks can draw their own conclusions. Our conclusion is we're going to have a number of cases mainly because we have more residential dwelling units. Arrest numbers. I'm not going to read the arrest numbers to you. You've had time to digest those. I will tell you that what we try to look at, what we've been looking at in our department is that we have been focusing our attention on arrests that are goal-oriented. I.e. we could arrest people, numerous cases for low-level order maintenance issues that happen in and around certain areas. We try to give warnings on those. We try to ameliorate the situation as best as we can and solve the problem. The same thing with traffic tickets. Our traffic tickets have tracked down over the last six years. And that is on purpose because we don't look for traffic summonses for a number of traffic summonses. What we're looking for are the goal-oriented traffic summonses, which will hopefully interact with the large number of accidents that we have in the city. Okay. Yes, we track our heroin use, we track our overdoses and the deaths that are caused by the particular overdose cases. We have nine additional cases right now that we're awaiting from the medical examiner's office to determine the cause of death. We have a strong feeling it's a heroin overdose, but we have not had the official notification of that. Year-to-date, well, for the entire year last year, we used our Narcan or naloxone 40 times. This year, first half of the year, we're tracking the same way. We've had 19 deployments. We consider it very important that we are part of the emergency response system of our city and it goes more than just Narcan and more than just heroin interdiction. Just the other day, we had a case at the oceanfront at the boardwalk where a gentleman had a heart attack. Officers happened to be on scene very quickly, began CPR. EMS, which happened to have two of their EMS folks on bicycles on the boardwalk, arrived very quickly. They deployed the AED. The gentleman's heart picked back up. We basically had a conversion and a save right there on the scene. Two weeks ago, we had a case where an individual was cut very badly while he was using his lawnmower. And officer arrived on a scene, deployed or used rather, his tourniquet, used it effectively and it was said to us through EMS personnel that had that tourniquet not been used when it was used, the individual could have bled to death at the scene. So I bring these up. We have the numbers for those. I just bring it up to let you know that we truly have an emergency response system. We truly work as close as we can with rescue and with our fire professionals to make sure that we're delivering a service to our system, by the way, our city, which is way beyond what most cities in the state are doing. Most cities do not carry AEDs, they do not carry Narcan, and they do not carry tourniquets. We've adopted a new goal this year and that is to strengthen our community partnerships. You've heard me talk many times about what we're trying to do in our city. We've stolen a, the philosophy of George Washington, who said that with the support of the people, you will accomplish great things. That's a paraphrase. And, and we've, we've taken that and we know that there's no better way to reduce crime and to enhance the quality of life for our citizens than to get the citizens heavily engaged in everything that we do. To give you an idea of where we're going on our transparency issue, this year, we've published all of our policies online so citizens can go right to the webpage and look at what policies that we have. And we've recently gone one step further on all citizen complaints. We now have that, an aggregate data, not specific cases with officers' names and locations, but an aggregate data of citizen complaints and how they were investigated and worked through in the police department. We truly believe, and you've heard me say this before, but every time I talk about it, I have to mention it. Strong communities make police obsolete. We stole that from a young lady who had a protest against police. And she had a great sign and that's what the sign said. And I interacted with her and said, I'm going to steal that idea because I believe in it 100%. Strong communities will make police obsolete. We are working very heavily in our Western Bayside area. I asked Captain Orr to, to be present during this presentation. We have started our enhanced community policing, what we're calling the True Community Policing Project in our Western Bayside area. Captain Orr has a number of officers now who have basically hit the ground running and running very hard. We're getting very positive feedback from the citizens. They like, they like to see the officers in the neighborhood. They like what the officers are doing because their philosophy and their strategy is to do the right thing at the right time. We're seeing some great benefits from that. We will take that idea, that philosophy, that strategy. As we work through it, we're going to correct things as we go along. Captain Orr has been absolutely magnificent in setting up this program and we're going to work through this in Green Run, the Holland Road corridor next. We are working very heavily in the first precinct in the Princess Anne Plaza area and Pecan Gardens. You know, we're always in and around Atlantis Apartments. We're always in and around SeaTac. The officers in the second precinct have made some great strides in both of those two, two particular neighborhoods. So what we're looking at is to reach out as much as we can, as often as we can. We're basically everywhere. The Lake Edward area summer nights basketball program has taken off absolutely phenomenally. And what we like about this is this was, is something where the community decided they need to do something on two nights a week with the young folks, instead of having the young folks hanging out, getting into some kind of a, a problem issue. And the adults have taken the lead on this. We, we are there. We're there to support. Some of our officers actually will, will, they're not very good, but they'll shoot hoops, they'll try as hard as they can. But the object and the intent is that the neighborhood owns this issue and it's been absolutely fantastic. Along with that is the Family Life Center that was built between Good Samaritan Church and Enoch Baptist Church. They built a building. between Good Samaritan Church and Enoch Baptist Church. They built a building. One church donated the land. The other church raised the money to build the building, and it's hitting the ground running. And that is the spirit of community. That's what we're looking for. These cops that we have don't just enforce the law. They're agents of social change, and I'm very proud to say that they've been in the lead on a number of these initiatives. And we have other city agencies that have been absolutely fantastic partners in going along with us. This is something new. As of January 1st, we've had 31 expressive activities events, i.e. protests, marches, whatever other term we want to call that. We've worked about 1,200 hours of that. Over 650 were on overtime. We believe it's really important that if somebody, obviously, it's the First Amendment, it's really important, that's cavalier of me to say, if folks are going to have an expressive activity, if they're going to protest, march, whatever the case may be, our job is to ensure their constitutional rights in doing it and the constitutional rights of other individuals in the area who are not partaking in that event. Up to this point, we've had great success in working with many of these groups and protesting whatever issue it is that they want to protest, including geese. Tomorrow night, we begin our neighborhood surveys. We're going to start in the Lake Edward Campus East area. The weather for tomorrow night is going to be sunny and beautiful. We lucked out. It won't rain like it's been the last two nights. We're going to go door-to-door like we always do. This is the most inefficient, labor-intensive way to do business, but we feel that the return on investment is higher than if we were to have a professional survey company just spit out questions to folks and have them give answers. You know, one of the real reasons why we do this is we get a young police officer to have a face-to-face conversation with a citizen in a non-stress environment that they would not normally have. And it pays great dividends in getting people to talk to each other that have a commonality, and that is, we all want a better life. So we'll start out in Lake Edward. We then go to the Green Run and Pecan Gardens area. On September 13th, we will be heavily engaged in Washington Square, Atlantis Hill Meadow, and we'll finish up the other side of Green Run, Manchester Village, and then we'll go over to Scarborough Square. Okay. We, in this profession, will hear many times, "Police aren't trusted," whatever the case may be. "We don't like the police. The police are heavy-handed." Somebody wrote in a newspaper a poem a while back, and I took great exception when he said, "Trigger-happy policemen everywhere." Well, we're not. We had cases this year. We have taken 82 guns off of people, either on them or within close proximity to what we call the reaching, the area of reach, which would be from the Supreme Court cases, where an individual had a gun, either in their belt, in their pocket, in their shoe, or they were reaching for a gun 82 times in the first six months of this year without having to use deadly force. But what's more important is nine times the individual had the gun in his hand. Nine times an individual had a gun in his hand. We did not use deadly force on that particular incident. I want to bring it up, and I want to tell our friends at the newspaper that, no, we're not trigger-happy cops everywhere. These guys do an absolute fantastic job every day of the week in pulling guns off of people, and the guy who wrote that article wrote it while he was enjoying, let's go to total use of force before I go totally off. We have had 347 times we've used what we call force on an individual. Now, again, let's put that in its proper perspective. Almost three-quarters of that has been what we call a hands-on technique. That is, Mr. Davenport, as an example, "I put my hands on you to affect the arrest." No one that I've ever met enjoys hearing the phrase, "You are under arrest." Well, very few people do. And so it usually goes into some type of situation where we will go what we call hands-on to an individual. And I want you to really understand that of all the arrests that we've made, and let's go to the next one, of all the total citizen contacts we've had. Now, as I look through citizen contacts, we have calls for service. We make arrests. We write tickets. We stop people on traffic stops. We stop them in field contact. So some of these numbers are duplicative. In other words, we go to a call for service, and we might have to make an arrest. We make a traffic stop. We may have to do a field interview. We try to cull out the specific numbers, and it's about 150,000 times in the first six months of this year we've interacted with someone, where we've had to take some kind of police activity with someone. And during that time, we have had to solve the situation 347 times using some type of force. Of those numbers, go ahead. What we like to do is graph it. As you can see, your contact controls, compliance, that's lowering. The further to the left is the lower amount of force that we use. The further to the right is the heavier amount of force that we use. You will see that we've pointed a weapon numerous times at an individual, yet the only time we fired the weapon was in one case where our officer was shot three times, and the other officer's returned fire. The reason why we capture that is to show how many times we actually unholster a weapon and how many times we do not use it. And we feel that's really important. A lot of these cases that we have where a weapon is pointed, is pointed by our SWAT team. When we call a SWAT team out on an arrest or on a search warrant, it's usually because there are indicators of imminent violence. And so the SWAT team, when they enter a situation like that, weapons are automatically out. So we track all of that. We're open for questions. And again...
Thank you very much for your presentation, Chief. Questions or comments from council members, please. John?
Chief, first of all, I always liked how your department uses data very well, and you are correct. Context is everything. On slide, would be slide 16, on page eight of the hard copy for people looking at that, are there national averages for the statistics on this page, like the average cities of over 500,000? It's 90, it's 120. I'm just trying to put that in context, as, you know, Virginia Beach is a big urban area, but it's still suburban, but transitional-ish areas. But I'm just curious how we would, is it, how that stands up relative to a peer group? And you probably have that handy, I suspect.
We are members of the Major City Chiefs Association, so it's the largest, 70 police departments in the country and the largest ten in Canada. And so we look at similar cities. One city I like to look at is Long Beach, California, that has the exact same population. Raleigh, North Carolina, has just about the exact same population and the exact same demographics. And we compare ourselves with those. To compare ourselves with a Philadelphia or a Detroit would be, you know, might not have, we're not comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges, because we have a different social demographic breakdown in the city. We look at all that, and I could tell you that as we, the major city chiefs, we have a violent crime survey monthly, so we pretty much know the numbers that are coming out well before the FBI publishes their numbers. And I could tell you that the numbers that we have, where we're up in certain areas, are up across the board, across the country, for similar-sized cities.
What I was wondering is, we have, like, if you annualize, this is 164 within arm-reached armed arrests. Would the average, is that like below the average in our peer group? Or are we about the norm? Are we below the norm?
Which number is that, sir?
Arrestees with firearms in possession at time of arrest, and you defined that as within the area of reach was 82. And if you annualize that, are we like above the average, below the average?
I don't have that number, but I could tell you, in just speaking with my peers...
Good enough.
We're the most heavily armed society on the face of the earth right now, and for some reason, people want to equate that with democracy. I won't get into that discussion. But we're seeing a lot more weapons on the street. Officers today are seeing not only a lot more weapons, but the caliber of weapons is much higher. You know, we made a motor vehicle stop not too long ago. The individual had a weapon on him, a weapon next to him, the AK-47, fully loaded, locked and loaded, ready to go, was in the seat behind him. He wasn't out that night for sightseeing. We know he was out to go and do some nefarious act. He went to jail. So there's no specific answer on that. I do track some of the violent crime with other cities, and I can tell you that the amount of gun issues that we're seeing across the nation have increased.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions or comments? I just would like to speak on behalf of the council to thank you all for the job. Great job you all do. I really applaud the, I mean, all of you and your team. I mean, everybody on the street and the leadership as well. But I also want to applaud the community policing. I really believe that this police department was way ahead of the game a number of years ago, and perhaps has resulted in better relationships within our community for taking that on at such a long time ago. The one thing that I talk about community policing, wherever I am with the police department, there's a group of people, I say, "The police department is always looking for good partners." And that's what I take away that I hope our community hears. They're willing to help form of great partnerships in your community, but they can't do it on their own. They need community members to step up and help as well. And so anytime we have that opportunity to share that, and I think one of the reasons at Bayside, JT could probably speak to it better than I can, but the partnerships you've got, you know, really got going over there, that you can trust each other, and the respect I see, and then I see the tremendous success from it. And I hope that those type of partnerships can be built across, continue to be built across city. Raspberry?
I just want to ask, how are we doing on our recruitment? I know it's a continuing issue.
Yes, it is. We, right now, are about, I have about 56 vacancies on the police department. We have 40 in the academy. We will start a 60-member academy in September. I can tell you, let me find the numbers, that last year, we had 80 sworn officers leave the police department. 24 of those were retirements. 23 were either resigned or asked to leave the academy or during their PTO training. In other words, you come into the academy, but this just isn't the line of work for you. 20 left for other criminal justice agencies, and we're tracking those numbers that have left for other criminal justice agencies. And I think the one issue that we're really looking at is that 20 of those officers left for other criminal justice agencies with less than six years of service. So they kind of come on. We give them absolute fantastic training. I think you are equipping our officers as the best in the country. And then they take that certification, and they move on to other environments.
Well, we've been down much higher numbers than this, so...
Yes, we have. I can say that I don't, I think there was, we had one time, one day, when we were actually at full staffing, and that was many years ago. It's just, it's the nature, because when we hire an individual, we go to hire an individual, there's a six-month training period, then another 17 weeks of field training, PTO training that comes in after that, before they are able to complete the mission of policing. And during that time period, other folks are retiring or moving on to other localities.
Other questions or comments? Chief, thank you very much for coming over. Appreciate all y'all's hard work. Thank you.
Good job.
All right. We're going to go to the complex care program. Danette.
Hey, Danette, you're on.
Danette, we're glad to have you here tonight.
Oh, glad to be here.
Go ahead and introduce everybody, will you?
Good evening to everyone. We are pleased to be here today to talk a little bit about complex care. I have with me on my team this evening Dawn Reichardt, who's my business manager, Eileen Smith, who's my deputy director of Behavioral Health and Disability Services, and Angie Hicks. And Angie is our division director over mental health and my trusting secretary Jill Locker. So today, we're going to be...
We welcome everybody over here. Glad to have you.
Today, I'm not doing the presentation. I'm doing the welcoming, and I'm going to turn it over to Eileen to talk more with you about complex care program.
Eileen, we're glad to have you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Okay, so we wanted to come talk to you today about the complex care program. This is a program related to housing and residential services for people who have mental health needs. So the first slide, obviously, is just our mission, but this program goes right with the mission. I will make note of that with you. We're trying to make sure that people have self-sufficiency and safety and their quality of life increases. Well, if they don't have a place to live, they're not going to have a very strong quality of life. So this program goes right with our mission. Okay. In 2016, a small focus group, which was made up of human services staff from various programs, most of them working for Angie, case management, residential services, the therapists, whomever, came together to talk about what is the highest need that we have. Who do they encounter? Who are these folks that we can't serve very well, or that they are having issues with, who come in and they cycle through maybe the hospital or jail? And so when they came together and they talked about that, they found that the people who are indigent or don't have resources are the ones that we're having the highest level of issues with, or the highest need for this type of housing. So what they decided was that we would have to increase what we're doing in supportive and supervised residential placements. And complex care just means that they are going to have a serious mental health issue, so they're going to have a strong duration of that. They're going to have functional needs. They may not be able to be socially adept in some ways. They may actually have issues with their family situations or their other situations in life. And so with those needs, the staff felt like this type of fund was going to be the best to help them to be stable in the environment. And the problem is that they're not stable environment. The problem is that they don't have a house to live in. So if you don't have a house to live in, you're at the very bottom of Maslow's hierarchy, which I think I even mentioned in here one time. If you don't have a house, if you don't have food, you're really not going to be able to have a high quality of life. So we reserve some funds for this type of intensive housing. And again, a little bit about it, intensive or supervised residential services provides those services for those who have a serious mental health issue, as I mentioned, such as schizophrenia, schizoaffective, major depression. These are things you're probably familiar with. And they do not have resources right now. So Andy Friedman was out in the lobby. We were talking a little bit about the Housing Resource Center, a little bit how we work together. I said, "Well, these people would have a serious mental health issue as well. They wouldn't just be walking in and out of the Housing Resource Center, but they would have a serious mental health issue" that he would refer to us. The services are going to provide 24/7 supervision. You cannot find this in the community. It is not, I mean, you can find this in the community with certain providers, but it is not something where there is a huge amount of providers to do this service, because the person is either, A, living with them in an adult foster care type of environment, or it's an assisted living type of environment, or they are just responsible for making sure that every aspect of their life is taken care of, whether they're taking their meds, taking a shower, getting to their day program, this type of thing. So it's a difficult service, the intensive residential. That's the one that we're going to focus on with the complex care. So our target population are individuals who are at risk of recurring hospitalization, homelessness, or incarceration, which I mentioned. They're also going to have a functional disability. They're going to have that diagnosis of a serious mental health issue. If they do not receive this type of service, they're going to be at risk to be out in the community homeless. They're going to be coming in and out of our Housing Resource Center. They're also going to be potentially in jail. Our referrals and how we intend, how we see we're going to get referrals for this program, and we already have a number of people who need it, I can imagine, is through what's called senior staffing meetings. Senior staffing meetings are after the staff have already had a treatment team meeting. So they've already been meeting on this client. The doctor sometimes is in this meeting, the nurse, therapist, case manager, whomever, and they have run out of options. So they bump it up to Angie or myself, but mainly Angie. And so they come to her and they say, "Well, we don't have any resources here. We don't know what to do. We're finding that we're not basically supporting this person in the manner that we should." At that point, that's where this fund would come in, because there is no other resource. We would use state funds and what's called discharge assistance funds if the person was in eastern state. These people would not have access to those, because if they're in eastern states, sometimes we can access those funds. But these people may have not gotten that far. They may not have already made it down to eastern state, but they are here locally, cycling in and out of the hospitals. Does that make sense? Okay, so our criteria would be someone who's 18 or older, a resident. As I mentioned, serious mental health issue or substance abuse are co-occurring. Lots of our clients, about 80%, are co-occurring. They're unstable in their housing. They have barriers to housing, which include their psychiatric illness, includes the fact that maybe they don't take the meds. They can have some behavior issues. And again, they're at risk for all these things on the bottom here. Homelessness and incarceration are two of our top ones. All right. So what we're thinking in terms of duration is that some of these individuals may only need it for six months. These are the people who are pending their benefits. They may get those benefits in six months. They may not need this type of resource anymore. Another category would be for the people who need it for a year. And the third category would be for two years. These are people who really aren't eligible for the benefits, but they still need this high level of care. high level of care, and they're going to need this high level of care to be successful in the community. Okay. So we also gave you some cost estimates of what it costs approximately per month with these different types of facilities. Adult foster care, obviously, they're certified by our social services side of our agency. It is a home-like environment. They are required, though, in an adult foster care setting, to attend an outside day program. So where we've encountered some issues there is if the person becomes unstable and is not able to do that, the adult foster care provider may be working and trying to get out themselves. So that's a lesser intensive service. Assisted living, little more intensive, but the difference between assisted living and the intensive residential one, which is the one we're probably going to focus on with this population, is that they have less supervision in assisted living, and in the intensive residential, the staff are actually, that program is licensed by the Department of Behavioral Health, so they have more behavioral health skills, they're going to help them with behavior mod and their med management and some skill building, some more social skills they're going to build. We do have providers for all of these, and these estimates is not including the AG grant. AG grants about $1,200 right now, which would add in and reduce the cost. Okay. So what we would like to see is an outcome, obviously, is that they're going to have increased access to the housing resources that we have and that we've listed, and we have many in the community, that they're going to have a reduction in hospital admissions and incarceration. When I came and I talked to you about the PAC team, that's one of the PAC team outcomes as well, and this, we already have five people on the PAC team that could use this, because the PAC team didn't come with residential funds. The PAC team comes with everything else that wraps around the person. So these people are going to have the same exact type of outcomes, and we are doing very well with that PAC team. We also have an outcome of enhanced social services or support services to them, such as our case management, and then finally counseling and other aspects that would help them go further in their recovery. And I think that's it.
Great presentation. Questions or comments? John, and then Barbara.
I'm trying to understand, since the total resources available for this pilot, short of this $1,200 a month, which is $1,200 a month for participant, you said there was an AG grant of $1,200?
If a person goes into an adult foster care or an assisted living program, they apply for and can be eligible for what's called an auxiliary grant. That would be $1,200 of the $2,200, of the $3,200 that it would cost.
But not guaranteed they'll get, that's a possibility.
No, but it is, something we try to access.
So if I take this $50,000, which you say is the amount of money that you have for this program, and you divide these, if everybody was in adult foster care, you'd have 22 patient months of service. And what I don't have a feel for is, and then if you went down the next one, you'd have 15.6, and if you went down to the last one, you'd have between 12.5 and 8.3. What I don't have a feel for is, what's the size of the universe of your target population? Do you have an estimated size of what that is? And given what you think your profile of this is, how many participant months will that 50,000 cover? Because I think that, in the end, that's the, so now we have a gap between, we have a program that's living off this proposed money, not new money, but money we're reallocating, and so now we're creating a service level and expectation that's going to serve less than the whole community, because there's a delta between the target population and what you can serve, given these things. And I'm just, what's the long-term plan for sustaining a public expectation that we're, not saying these are good people to serve us, but once you go out here, Mr. Merritt, you do something, there's a, how do you walk away from something you're now delivering? And I'm interested...
Hard to do.
It is hard to do, and I think when doing these things, as good as it is, and I'm sure the city manager is probably thinking the same thing I am, you know, good deeds, no good deed goes unpunished, it's an old phrase, but we're now, I like to at least understand the difference between the total population that needs the service and what 50,000 will do. I think we need to understand that, and I don't, but no one should walk away thinking that we're, getting back to Barbara's point, what are we agreeing to? We're not agreeing to that we've now accepted a long-term obligation to establish a new level of benefit out of local funds for what traditionally has been a state responsibility. And I just want to make sure people understand where I'm coming from, is everybody likes people, but in the end, we've got to also, and that could be our own relatives to boot, and people that we know, but in the end, this is an expensive proposition to think about, and I'm sure that's going through the manager's mind as well. So I think, I'd like to know how many patient months and how many really target participants we can do with 50,000, because I think that's what we're really buying, is that's what we're buying, not this number, but what that does. And what this future funding will be based on the estimated need, which is obviously something greater than 50,000, I think, but will not exceed the community services fund balance reserves. And so I guess I'm asking the city manager, is are we fencing off some portion of their reserves for this? And how are we managing, because there's other things that can put a lean on the reserves, I guess, of that group, and how are we managing that? And is there a not-to-exceed amount of the reserves? I'm just trying to understand where, when do we, what's the reserve of the reserve for the true contingencies? Does that make sense?
All right. You've asked about 6, 8, 10, 12, 14 questions. I'm going to let the team tackle it. Let me, as they get their thoughts in order, let me let the council know, an initiative that's well underway. I've tasked Ken, I've tasked Danette, I've tasked Andy. This complex care population is alive and exists in our city. It is a growing need. We have reached out, we've got Ken Stolli, who's now the biggest provider in the city for helping us take care of them, because you heard it repeated in Eileen's presentation, incarceration is three hots and a cot, and they eventually get there without us stepping in and be it. We see it down the oceanfront, we're now seeing it in our town center, we're now investing in a major housing resource center, it's a system of care. And so I've tasked Ken, the executive lead with Danette's expertise, and so what you're getting is, you're getting the output of these initial steps and the pilots associated with it. Because I would love to be able to rely on the state, but the state has basically decided, uh-uh. And maybe our revenue stream at the state, we, you know, the economy picks up and it resurfaces and they reestablish the funds that they have taken away from us, but in light of the administration's comments with regards to social programs, in light of the state's overt actions to cut programs, it is on our doorstep. Local council members, local government leaders, and so we are not going to wait and be overrun. We are in the process of working it. So maybe they can give you some numbers and give you some ideas, but the order of magnitude is certainly far greater than a $50,000 pilot, and the will of the council will prevail, but I think you're paying me to figure out things before they get so bad that we can't have a process in place to start to work this. And it's, I think it's part of our overarching strategy to be a caring community, one of your new goals. So please.
So my answer may be a little more accountant-y, because that's the angle I come from.
Dawn does.
That's what I do. And like the manager, Ann Eileen Boz, said, there is no state funding stream for this. We do have fund balance reserves, and I know you know what the fund balance reserve is. And you know that it changes every year, and it depends on what we've used. I have, when we came up with the numbers for this, we came very conservative with the 50,000. The idea was to come in, pilot it, we would certainly not take on someone, let's say we brought somebody in for a two-year program, for whatever reason, we would not take on someone that we didn't have the appropriation from council to see through those two years. We're in the middle of closing, you know, fiscal year 17. I'm working very closely with the budget director and the city controller to come up with what our fund balance reserve will be. It is more than $50,000, and we intend to put more than $50,000 toward the program as a whole. The idea was to get it started. One of the things that we knew, we had someone who was in need right away, so we kind of brought it forward as fast as we could. So I don't have a number for you today of what the total would be, but yes, in what you're saying, we would have a number of that reserve, let's say our, just to make it small, our universe of reserves was $100,000, and we decided $75,000 would be for complex care and $25,000 would be for other things. We're going to track it to that. We are not going to put people in a program that we can't see them through for the duration of the time. And like every program we have, we're not going to serve everybody who needs it, because we can't. There's no resources for that. Does that answer most of your questions? I don't know the population, I could throw that back at heart, but does that help you with the financial side of it?
It does help, but I would like a later date, I'd like to understand how we assess the universe of people versus the target that we can serve. And I applaud, I mean, I know you deal with a very difficult issue, because everybody in our churches deal with these in different ways, and we all have to live within the confines of limited resources, and we will not be able to compensate for the state and the federal government.
Right.
You're right on, you explained it very well, and I think we get that. Barbara, then Shannon.
City manager touched on, when I was thinking the repetition of hearing that word, incarceration, I guess a lot of this target population, unfortunately, that's where they end up, or I couldn't help but think as you were talking, we had just had this really fine presentation from the police chief, but too often, when there's a report of particularly maybe an officer using force against an individual, it's an individual maybe who is off their meds or has some mental situation. And so it really becomes a police matter, and unfortunately, sometimes the police wind up acting in a situation because of someone who simply doesn't have the capacity to handle themselves and so forth, and so we really get into a bad situation, really tragic. But I'm assuming that there's connection with the police department and so forth, but do you all at all track the types of things that wind up with the police and so that there's this, I mean, I know you mentioned Ken Stolli and all that they're doing over there, which is unfortunate, but I think it's really troubling that so many of the folks wind up in this public safety kind of element, you know, and a violent situation, and that's difficult to address, and I'm sure you're trying to do something there.
Yes, ma'am. We are very much partners with the police. The Crisis Intervention Team, CIT, has been, it was established in 2008, prior to my time here. It has been acknowledged in many ways, won many awards, actually, because we were one of the first in the state to have a CIT center, which is at the Virginia Beach Psychiatric Center. Angie's team, who works in emergency services, they're all licensed therapists, they track everything. We have emergency custody orders, where the police actually take the person in custody, bring them to the CIT center, and then we assess them. Obviously, we don't want everyone to go in the hospital, but some people do go into the hospital immediately under a temporary detention order, which is called a TDO. So we train the police as well as work with them nonstop, very much partnership with the chief and his team.
Thank you.
And I think actually, like, three-fourths of our police force, if not most of them, are trained in CIT.
Shannon.
My first question was along the lines of John's, in that what is, do we have an estimate of the total universe? So if you do kind of get an estimate for that, I'd like to see that. But next, I guess, I'm questioning, or not que, I guess, what's the plan for, since we do have a finite number of 50,000 that we're throwing out there, I agree, we can't do nothing. We can't not do anything, we have to do something, and so let's pilot this and move forward and help somebody, whether it's everyone, but we can help someone. Of those levels of service, the six months or the year or the two years, the 1,500 to the $6,000 range, is there, since we know we have a finite number, is there, are we going to go after all of the level ones, so we can help as many as possible? Are we going to go after just a finite number of the level threes, so that we can get the most severe kind of some help? And then you had mentioned earlier that, you know, we're not going to put someone in the program for two years, knowing they need two years, and not be able to see them through financially. But if we put someone in the program that, in the beginning, we think that they need a year, and it's the first quarter of the football game, and you're making a call of what you need to do in the last quarter, and then all of a sudden, that year's up, then you have to make the call, do we need another year? Are we going to have the resources there to do that? So how are we addressing these things, or do we even know yet?
Can I interject for one, just for one minute on the 50,000, please? Oh, sorry. Just on the, I would like us to not get too hung up on the 50,000. The plan is to expand the program, and we have funds to expand the program. We just need to get it set up, and we need to determine what our fund balance is that's available for it. So we still need to know the universe, no matter why I'm not arguing that, but the 50,000 itself is to get this done. It would become part of our annual budgeting program. You would see it when the annual budget came through, like you see our other programs, up to and never over what we have reserved for it. So when we're looking at it and we start this, I guess my only caveat is that the plan is, and we know we have more reserves than $50,000, we just don't have the number until we get through the end of the fiscal year. The plan is to have this be a larger program than that.
Well, I understand that, but as a council member, our job is to look at the dollars and cents and look at that dollar figure that you gave us and say, okay, is this realistic? So that is our fiduciary responsibility, is to make sure that it's a fiduciarily sound program.
I agree. Yeah, I think my caveat is that...
We're not really picking on that, it's just, that's just what was thrown up there.
But if the universe is really big and we come back with a small number, just having in your head that we'll be back someday, just so we want to serve more of them, that's all.
We know.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All righty. We will, the city council retreat information, Dave was kind enough to put the schedule down there for you. Also, I think, you know, that Dave sent out something in a Friday package where everything that had been brought up at the retreats had someone assigned to it, and I guess that's in preparation for those who haven't, or talked to Lyle, if you want to look at that as a resource for you, you know, when Lyle's calling things to talk about, that's there. But I think we got a pretty good schedule here, and we'll make a pretty, almost a full day of good stuff.
Well, I didn't make it a full day. I know that interviews have begun, and I just, I wanted to take a moment to, if you haven't had an opportunity to look at the memo that we sent you with your 10 goals, we were able to reach back beyond just your goal-setting workshop that you had this year, but we added council-requested initiatives from the more recent goal-setting workshops and listed those within you, provided you executive leave assignments and initiative leads, and also provided you a list of other things that are ongoing in the city as well. I think you all are certainly knowledgeable enough that when we get into goal-setting, you only focus on a handful of all the things that it takes to really make the city reach, move forward and reach the goals that you set for us. And so I'm very proud of the directorates who are able to track what they're doing that supports your goals, and hopefully, it is a good tickler for you to highlight and to mark, so that your consultant, Lyle Sumac, has an opportunity to figure out an agenda that meets in those hours that you just got laid out for you, so that you can cover everything that you want.
All right. Thank you very much. John Earn, Christmas light, holiday lights.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Well, first off, I was really surprised after we made the announcement that, you know, the holiday lights was in jeopardy, about how emotionally attached a lot of our citizenry is to the holiday light show. Obviously, we've watched the numbers of ticket sales we've had every single year, but you can't really delve down into how many people really consider that part of their holiday experience and taking their kids and all that kind of stuff. So, yeah, including people around this table, so. So if you recall, when we had the presentation from staff last week, the recommendation was to take $170,000 and actually relight some of the displays, primarily in the parks, so that we could use that as a test, and that we would not have the holiday lights this year. But I told you I was going to meet with staff and other stakeholders of the resort, which we did last Friday, and working with Bobby Malati.
That was our fallback position, if you didn't figure out something.
I was, I gave, I had some very...
I believe that's what we said.
I had some direction from this table, is to try and figure something out, which we did do, and we moved in on Friday, and working with Beach Events, who's our contractor for actually putting those on, they felt that they could actually get about 40 of the displays relit for this year. they felt that they could actually get about 40 of the displays relit for this year, which is a great reduction in terms of numbers we have. We normally have about 110 light displays on the boardwalk. So, it's my recommendation from this working group that we go ahead and have the holiday lights display happen to occur this year. It'd be abbreviated, only be about 10 blocks. We will reduce the price to actually show that, but obviously, our cost recovery will be reduced from that as well. We will use this opportunity to test these relamped fixtures and see if they're going to work, and if they are, then we will go ahead and work towards relamping the entire display, so we'll be back up for 2018. And we'll hopefully be able to come up with, between now and then, with some other technologies we might be able to test along with that light show as well. So, in order to do that, it's not 170, it'll be $250,000, which would come from the tourism investment fund, but it'll take councilmatic action to do that. But what I need to tell is if the feeling of the group, of this group, is to approve that funding source because they have to-
I think you come in pretty close at what we should move forward with, and I would recommend that we support.
We got to order, we got to order the light bulbs, like tomorrow.
I'm seeing everyone's heads nodding in favor.
Very much so.
Okay.
Right.
Now, this will be safe.
Right. My team, my team, my team understands. Now that it's been brought to our attention.
See, I told you you could become Santa Claus Tom. I mean, he started out tough there.
Same, but it'll be on the boardwalk. It'll probably start 20-
John- We'll have an ordinance for you next Tuesday to approve.
John, and to the staff, thank you all very much, and I do think we got to make it clear, this isn't going to be the grandiose plan. This is, like you just said, you know, greatly reduced.
Those people who look forward to every single year taking their families on the boardwalk to see the show will not have to miss a year to do that, and hopefully by 2018, we'll be back.
Right, and keep the price low. Okay. Anything else? Yes, sir.
Reason why I was late today, the deferred compensation board, which I serve on along with Danette, which and others, we are considering potentially moving what we manage actively and engaging using VRS as our, I'll call it, an outsourced thing. We don't know if we're going to go there, but to lower the cost and therefore increase flexibility and therefore return.
How do the returns compare?
Well, pretty good. We're looking at that, giving you the details, we'll finish something else, but that's where I was. We had a little phone call Patty as we moved this, trying to make sure that we don't put ourselves in harm's way, like some people are finding themselves because they're not aggressively making sure they're paying the lowest fees and giving their participants the best dollar value and choices, so we're not trying to create any liabilities for anyone, so we're doing good stewardship. We're a long way from making a final decision, but that's what delayed me slightly today.
Great, great. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you all very much. Will Adorn, and to John Earn and John Moskowitz Heifer.